I guess so.
Carrie, we can hear whatever you're saying. Do you want me to, you want to put on mute? Or do you want me to? But I can't mute her, then I don't know when she wants to contribute.
Right.
Okay, well, let's keep going then. Moving into reports. Sharon, you have a good question.
Sure. So Carrie?
Yes.
We can hear everything you're saying and it's being broadcast.
That's okay. You probably want to mute.
So February, actually January is school board appreciation month, but we like to do it on February because January just doesn't work for us because we're coming back from winter break. So just wanted to share my appreciation for the 18 individuals who volunteered to be our board members. We continue to demonstrate their commitment, always being stewards for public education. And in this day and age, being a steward of public education is incredibly important. You value the input of the community, your students at educators, and thoughtfully consider the impact of decisions for now and long into the future. I understand the responsibility, they understand the responsibility, they have to create a sustainable, challenging and creative learning environment for our children, and they appreciate each other and have good laugh. I know that I am lucky to have such a diverse and committed group of bosses that guide my work and support me in what I do. So thank you. We have cupcakes that are wonderful to help celebrate in our appreciation of this board.
It would be rude not.
And tonight, and right now, at this moment, please take a cupcake. They're really, really good. I also wanted to recognize, two weeks ago, we received the governor's plan to reimagine education in the state of Vermont. I think MVSU is really in a great position now in terms of how do we participate in this dialogue? And then really recognize the work that we've been doing ongoing. I will tell you, my phone explodes about every hour on the hour about all the different things that are happening. And my last response was, let's buy some popcorn and watch from the sidelines because it's really getting interesting out there. There are proposals, there are counter proposals. I will be in Montpelier on Friday. So as I learn and see, you know, the latest counter proposal that it came out on Friday is that legislation was written to reduce the number of S shoes, SDs, to 25 instead of 55. So clearly, there are people who are interested in doing things differently and are putting out new ideas every day. So my, my job and responsibility is to keep you all informed as we get to that point. And really, the next few weeks are the most interesting until the carryover. So when we go from the House and Senate committees to the actual full House and Senate. On Friday, I did testify to the House Education Committee around some of the work we've been doing. Around how do we, as a Southeast region, support each other? And so that was well received. So I'll continue to be, to testify and be available to offer our experiences and things we do well. But as I learn and see if it's credible information, I'll make sure I pass it on to board members in the community. That's my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Sharon. Raph is next. Is he online?
Yeah, he's online.
Great. Raph, what you got?
Hi, everyone. Just a couple of quick updates from our technology work. We have moved forward with purchasing panic buttons for the middle school, high school. And we are going to be working in the next month or two to roll those out and to develop protocols around their usage at the middle school, high school. This is a process that really involves working with administrators, but also local emergency responders, and just making sure that all of our protocols are tied together and working. And the other piece that I'll share is that it's that time of year again where we're starting to prepare for the VT cap assessments. And so we're actively working with all the schools to get their preparations done and get schedules made and begin to get ready for our round of testing, which will begin in March.
Great. Thank you. Raph, any questions for Raph on the board?
Question you.
Yeah.
Are you finding that things seem to be a little more organized? And preparation for that seems to be more streamlined or easier than, than when, was it last year? When was the first year of Cognia? And I know there were some issues with the state providing.
Yeah, this is our third year of testing with Cognia. The first year was definitely rough and rushed. I think it, I'm not sure it's gotten better, but we understand what we need to do better. There's a very limited amount of information. And there are just certain things that we've learned in the past two years to kind of make that process a little bit easier. So I think we have, we have a better handle on it. Yeah.
Other questions for Raph? All right, Shayna, our director of student sports.
Hi, good evening. In addition to the things that I shared in my report, I wanted to highlight some internal sharing of the wealth between the MTSS and the special education teams. And we have a newbie group for our new to Vermont special educators or new to the field. And that is led by Amanda Rank, and she meets every other week in a collaborative session to work on case management and how to do paperwork properly, how to reach our students and engage with families in the most effective ways. And she's also available for office hours as well. One other highlight of sharing the wealth internally is ongoing work that we're doing with our students in middle school and high school on transition services, partnering with agencies such as Higher Ability, as well as a very talented special educator, Emily Malone, who's working with both special educators and the agencies and students to make the most of career and explore, career exploration and job internship and even some job placements in the community.
Hey Shayna, any questions for Shayna? All right, thank you. Next up is our CIA Director, Dr. Settle.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. I have a few thank yous really this evening as a follow-up to the board report I put together. First, I just want to say a hearty thank you to all of our educators who participated in our, making sure our winter testing window went really smoothly. And it did. Patty Kelly absolutely did a rock star job, making sure we compiled all the data and followed up and make sure everything was entered. And we'll be checking that out over the next few months and getting an update on how our students are doing. I also want to say a thank you to a lot of school districts in Vermont that are coming together and digging into EL curriculum. There are 16 school districts that are implementing EL at a variety of levels. And some curriculum directors have come together to think about how we can provide regional professional learning for our teachers as they implement EL. And that has started with some online training sessions that have so far gone really, really well. I think that's it for me right now. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Jen? All right, great. You're getting off easy. Our student representatives, Aiden O.
Take this off. So past that, past few months, the past month felt pretty short, I think, partially due because of the Martin Luther King weekend and also the holiday break led into January a bit. But it was a pretty, despite the kind of short feeling of it, a lot did happen for students over the month, including the change in semester. A lot of students ended their first semester classes and maybe end their second semester classes. And with that is also a very important time for seniors who are applying for colleges or are already accepted into colleges, need to submit their mid-year report there. And so pretty active time. Sports have also been really active and going well. A lot of stellar performances from athletes, both in the high school and middle school. And wish them the best luck as they enter their last stretch in the regular season and enter the playoffs. There have been some concerns raised by a lot of students and teachers alike regarding the heaters in the high school and middle school. Owen and I have both experienced this, and we have heard from other students and teachers about how they continuously blast hot and cold air, and they loud and disrupted these noises by doing so. And it often leads both students and teachers to be uncomfortable in the classrooms, temperature-wise, whether they're too hot or too cold. But it also, you know, it's just a disruption in the class, makes it hard for students to focus, especially in like very test-like settings where focus needs to occur. Teachers were previously able to adjust and turn off these heaters, but they are no longer, longer able to. Because the control knobs were removed and doors accessing the control knobs, from what we have heard and seen, were completely shut. Teachers have reached out and crying about this issue, and it seems like a clear response has yet to have been given regarding like why these knobs were removed and what's going on with these heaters. This seems quite sporadic, the way they're acting up. And so we would just like to address this issue and come to solutions that classes go a little more smoothly. And that teachers and students are very disruptive. As a last part of mine, which will lead to no one's, we would like to thank you all on the board. This will be our last report as student reps, and we really enjoyed our time here. Owen wants to talk about more about who is going to be coming in, take our place or so.
Thanks. I do completely agree with Aiden on the heating. That's definitely a concern of students in the high school, middle school. I'm going to cover a few different things, though. It's important to remember that. The new semester began last week. Students are taking new elective courses, so my schedule is largely the same, but I've swapped out pottery for philosophy, which is a much needed change because I'm not a very artistically inclined person. But it's good to have such diversity of those elective classes. We always talk about our APs, but it's also great that we have some of the hard courses, things like that. There are other fun things happening this winter, poetry out loud posted by the English Department is starting up. I think there's about 30 plus students signed up, which is a record as far as I'm aware. So that's good to see. Sports teams are nearing the end of the regular season, and they're doing pretty well, some of them, some better than others. We have 167 students in high school, middle school registered for winter sports currently, which is a pretty high level. And it's not as high as our fall and spring registrations, but those are always higher. So I just thought it was good to note how good our participation rates are in those activities. I'd also like to introduce, and one of them is here, Lila. Our two nominations for the school board, so Lila Zeiglin, class of 2027, and Joaquin Jumpwell, who had a commitment sign unfortunately. They'll be, we'll nominate them and they'll be up for consideration at the March meeting for taking a similar role to Aiden and myself. A quick thing about them, Joaquin is a cadet with the property of fire department. He volunteers there. He manages the Woodstock Union Student Section Athletic Social Media Accounts. And he's a founding member of the debate team and plays the cross and soccer. Lila holds leadership roles in Yoda Theater. She's the Secretary of the QSA and the 2027 Student Government. And also is in jazz band, the chorus, and, and I'm really looking forward to these guys taking on this role. I think they're pretty great choices. They went through a rigorous selection process. And I think they represent the best and the broadest of our student population. And again, I want to thank, as Aiden did, the board for the past four years for accommodating us. It's been really interesting experience, to say the least, especially for me, I'm pretty interested in government. I studied it in college, so local government, this has been pretty cool for me. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I've always admired how, how strictly and how, how good you guys have been about advocating for students and student voice. And I very much look forward to where Joaquin and Lila will take this role from here. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you both. I guess I'll say, as your sitting board chair for the evening, it's really been a pleasure to work with both of you. You both took the, just you become in both freshmen, right? When you came in as the board, student board reps and to occupy those seats at that time and to immediately have kind of raised the bar to hear that, you know, these incoming student reps are the best and brightest in the student population. They're only going to be carrying on the tradition of that. Thank you so much.
Carrie's back.
Great.
And just to know, all government operatives.
Within Vermont.
Okay. I think I have two more seconds. Oh, no, no, thank you. Oh, yeah, you got it. It's been great. Yeah, it's been a lot of fun. Thank you for having me. Any other comments or lovely words for us, student reps from the board? Okay, wonderful. Let's move into our time scheduled appointments. Oh, sorry, Anna, go for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to repeat everything that was said for both Aiden and Owen. You all have been spectacular on the board. I wish you both the best. And I will continue carrying on the request that we refer to students as students and not children and kids. So thank you again for that guidance. And we look forward to hearing your success stories moving forward.
Wait, philosophy and pottery. Hang on. Did you guys both leave the board and set your sights on a high academic achievement? I have a joke I'm going to leave you with. It's somewhere between fine arts and philosophy. Ready? How many surrealists does it take to change a life? All right.
It's not even a dad joke. You are recorded. I will just send him that in a minute.
All right, let's get it up there on our phone for these school days.
There's a tough act to follow, but thank you for having me. Good evening, everybody. I did provide Raina with a hard copy of a handout that I hope everybody has. There are, excuse me, hyperlinks within, so a digital version can be made available at any point. But this is just an outline of three, three areas. Just want to update everybody on today. Just the preliminary, preliminary, I stress that key findings from the, the study that we've been a part of so far this school year with UNC. The next section is what we've been up to these past four or five months in regard to exploring this topic, the cell phone free learning environment, and how we've been interacting with each other and engaging students in the community and the staff in that conversation. And finally, just an update on legislative and legislative considerations and what we're up to next. So just really starting from the top, I don't need to go through the data with you, but we had about 144 student participants, approximately a third of our student population. And so far, again, very preliminary data, just really still wet ink. But some of the data here kind of validates our experience and our data that we have been collecting so far this school year, the ebb and flow of the school day. But yeah, about 83% of our students do have a phone that they bring to school every day. And approximately 79 of students have articulated that they use them for a variety of reasons and non-class purposes throughout the day. So things that we suspected, but it's also great to hear directly from the students that participated in the, in the survey. And then I'm just going to skip down, the vast majority of our teachers do believe that smartphones are interfering with teaching and learning time. And some also cite increases from their experience and student misbehavior due to, due to the use of phones in the, the learning environment. I also just detached a resource that Dr. Mitch Prinstein of UNC has recently written. He also articulates in the article, which I find really accessible, the fact that he is a father. And while he does this research and does this work all day, every day, he does go home to two teenage adolescent students and has the same conversations and the same types of power struggles that some of our students also experience. So in this article, he posits four different actions that families and schools can implement to reduce social media risk amongst our adolescents. So I encourage you to take a look at that. So far, we've been up to quite a bit over these past four or five months. Everything from three family, parent, community forums. We've had multiple discussions as a staff and staff meeting. We had about 65 of our students and some students from other schools in the area attend a well orchestrated and facilitated debate on the topic at Killington this past fall. We have had some data shared earlier this year, this fall, with students through advisory. And just recently, we had two students approach me, very interested in being involved in, in the process as we move through the spring. And we decided that it was time to create a student, student cell phone free learning environment committee. We've had one meeting so far. We have another meeting on the books. And a few teachers would also like to join that meeting and help facilitate that process and share some ideas. And finally, the, the bottom section that you'll see is just an update on the legislation so far. There's a link to the most recent draft that I'm aware of. As Sheri alluded to earlier in the meeting, there's a lot going on with the legislation. So it feels like every week or so, there's a different draft. But basically, the same premises in all of them, there's some, some language that restricts cell phone use during the school day. And just moving forward, just on our financial update, we've been able to raise about $6,000 so far from just local donations, a local grant. And I don't know if you recall or not, but earlier when we were speaking about the UNC study, participants or whether they provided consent or not, had the choice of donating $5 to this cause or receiving a $5 gift certificate. So we're pleased that $850 was raised just for participants, just choosing to consent or not. So moving forward, we are going to continue to have this conversation with students. And we are going to be considering their input. And as we move forward, we'd like to put, well, excuse me. We are continuing to implement the strategies that we have in place from the handbook for the school year. Students, some students struggle with that, some staff struggle with, with that as well. But we are going to revisit this with the, the student population, as I shared, make some decisions moving forward. We'd like to try some things, and if they work, then great, we can maybe continue with that while we wait for legislation. And if not, I just got off the phone with Yonder earlier today, and they are supportive and ready when we are. If that's the approach that we would like to take when the time is right. So thanks for the time, and I'm sure you have questions, so I'm happy to answer any.
Thanks, Erin. Question? Yeah, I'd be curious to hear on the staff engagement and kind of conversations around enforcing this, you know, a new approach.
Yeah, in general, staff feel pretty, pretty burned out about cell phones. They've had these conversations for years with me, with the previous principal. They've had student surveys and student input in the past. But, and again, I'm not going to speak for all teachers here, but this was a topic of our last staff meeting just last week. And when I shared that I wanted to take a step back, really include student voice, students have reached out to me, and I really want to meet students where they are and have this conversation. Not whether or not we're doing this, but how we're going to do this. Staff in general were reasonably appreciative, you know, like staff want to hear student voice as well. And they're really burned out about cell phones and having to police cell phones in, in classrooms and so on. They're pretty much done with the conversation and looking forward to a change. So they feel valued as educators in the classroom specifically, where a lot of the challenges are. So yeah, that's the general sentiment.
Any question?
So as a student and also being part of the, the conference and the leadership summit where this was discussed, I'm just thinking like timeline, this is the cell phone free learning initiative and the policy has been like going pretty strong over the year. If they, when this, you know, all goes well and this does, and it being implemented, what is the timeframe with that? Would it be like end of this year? Would it be middle of next year? Like what's, what does that look like if that is?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, as I shared with the, the students, about 13 or 14 students so far in the student committee. You know, we have work to do. We need to get together. We've got, we have a meeting on the books. But if we drag our feet, then we know, I'm not, we're not going to have time to implement any, any variations to what already exists. And I really pitched it as this is an opportunity for the student body to lean in, show the administration, teachers, what we need to do or not need to do. How, how strict do we need to be? Legislation coming, that's very clear. If I'm asked to testify, which I have been asked to consider, I'd really like to speak to process. I'd really like to speak about how we do this at Woodstock High School and Middle School and that we involve student voice and that we have these conversations and that they were really hard. But I'd really like to get something in place that staff and students can implement with fidelity right around April break, just before, just after. I think that gives us some time to live it a bit, to gather some, some fresh data and then make an informed decision if we want to move forward with Yonder or if we want to maintain the course or make some slight shifts. But I suspect that what we may come up with isn't all that different from what's already in the handbook. I suspect the message from both students and teachers will be that everybody needs to lean into this and implement this with fidelity, which means students need to adhere to it and teachers need to follow the expectations as well. It's going to be, I suspect at this point, a real group effort where everybody's in on this together and trying this together so that we can make informed decisions moving forward. And again, the legislation's coming, and I'd really like to emphasize how important the process is. Both you and I speak with Yonder, they say, the process you're doing is amazing. Continue to have these conversations with students and families in your board. All the literature suggests the same thing. So it's really important to me that we have some clarity, Aiden, that later this spring. But at the same time, I really want students to be able to lean in and say, hey, you know, we're ready. We're taking this seriously. We want to do this too, and we need the teachers and adults to, to help. And that means holding the line and holding everybody accountable as, as expected.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Great. Thank you, Dr. Stinkman.
Thank you.
Let's move on to retirements and resignations. We have three, as you can see printed in the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the notice of departure of Kathleen Clean, our TPDS special educator, Lauren Gagné, West Spanish teacher, and Marcia Davis? Our middle school and high school literacy interventions? Motion, legal motion, second by, right? First, let's have some discussion. And I guess let's start with, start with Kathleen. Is Deb?
Well, I can speak to Kathleen. So Kathleen began at our intensive needs program at the middle school and high school. She brought a high level of expertise. She'd been an intensive needs special educator for years. And she's held that chair for a year and a half and is now finishing her time at Prosper Valley. She is a highly qualified special educator, and she's brought some real expertise and experiences to that program. So she'll be missed.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else for Kathleen? All right, let's, Lauren, maybe Maggie?
Yeah, Maggie, do you want to start and I can wrap it up?
I'd love to. Senor has been with us for three years. She really built, rebuilt a Spanish program that was significantly reduced during COVID times. And she has a very challenging job of teaching all the students in the school two times, some classes three times a week. And she is just remarkable at how she builds connections with students and how quickly she transitions from one room to the next around the building. She's on her feet all day, interacting with all the students, and she has brought a love for Spanish to our building that is quite noticeable in the short time that she's been with us. She does a really lovely job integrating the content from other classrooms into the Spanish classroom. She's had chickens visit the school to connect to the Spanish lesson she's teaching. And beyond the Spanish classroom, she also contributes to the school as a girls on the run coach. She's helping with our Show Your Stuff Talent Show this year. She was a translator for the high school football team, state championship football team. I'm sure her role as a translator was essential to that. She has really invested so much of her heart and soul into our school. She's also incredibly flexible. She will substitute for any classroom. She will cover any duty. Last year, she was tapped with very short notice to help out and teach Spanish at Reading Elementary, in addition to Woodstock Elementary. And she's going to be greatly missed, but we definitely understand her decision to make a move back to New York for her family reasons.
Yeah, just to build on what Maggie said, she really stepped up. We had a student who really wanted to play football, had no idea about the concept of football, nor did she. And together, they figured out what it was to pay on a state championship team. She loved it and developed an amazing relationship with this young man. Talk about accessibility, brought a sport and being part Brought a sport and being part of a team and this young, this gentleman had joined our school only a little over a year ago. So how do we bring students in and make them feel welcome? And she did a remarkable job. Uh, a great story about uh, Tom Emery was trying to teach the young man how to tackle. There is no such word in Spanish for tackle. So as Tom Emery would do, comes up to the kid, shoves him to the ground and said, tackle. And that's how, and so they both knew after that what tackle was. Um, but you know, again, Lauren had, is not as athlete, did never saw football before. And our young man's closest experience was rugby and he had an amazing time on the team. So I just, Lauren, everything that Maggie said, um, in terms of fully committing, this was her first public school experience as an educator. And uh, such commitment to Woodstock Elementary School. So we will definitely miss her.
Great. Uh, anyone else for, for Lauren? All right, um, Marcia Davis, um, maybe Erin?
Yeah. Yep, happy to. Um, Marcia Davis is a literacy interventionist. I just had the pleasure of sitting down with her this week to, to prepare for an observation. And I must say that the, this educator's level of intentionality in her practices is extremely high. Um, this is an educator who uh, brings in a, a great deal of detail to the data that she collects. Uh, and uh, incredible amount of care to the instruction that she provides. Uh, this is somebody who works directly with some of. Uh, our, our high school students who really struggle to read. Uh, and this is somebody who has the skills to build rapport with those students, really get down to the nitty gritty of the skills of reading. Um, collect the data to show growth, uh, and is really wonderful, uh, and just always goes out of her way to celebrate that growth with the students. So um, she's been with us for three or four years now. Uh, Marcia is, is uh, moving on. Um, to uh, other, to other endeavors, uh, but I just uh, will like to just mention the level of intentionality, uh, the data-driven. Uh, student-centered educator, uh, that is uh, moving on. So uh, thank you for your service, Marcia.
Thank you. All right, uh, all in favor of accepting these resignations, please say aye. Thank you each for your service. All right, uh, new hires, is there a motion to approve the hiring of two licensing creators, Kelly Schultz and Phyllis Uwe? Ryan, I think we've probably got a discussion on these.
Right, they were late hires and so they needed to reapply for the positions there.
All right, all in favor? Motion, Carrie. All right, next is uh, nothing on the rural school community alliance. Um, is Corinne?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Trent, take it away.
This is essentially an invitation for our board, um, from a group that is. Organizing um advocacy during this time of transition. Um, and uh, we can consider when we want to uh, join. The main rep, um, uh, the main goal, I think, the alliance is to. Um, advocate for maintaining the strength of the community voice. Um, so the governor's put forward a proposal, other alternatives are coming down the pike. Um, one aspect of the governor's proposal is to consolidate. Um, school districts into five regions across the state, which means five, five boards. In the state, um, with, I think each with six elected board is the proposal. Um, so, uh, you know, there's a lot. There's a lot in the proposal and there's a lot of different thoughts about, you know, strengths and weaknesses and other ways to address what are. Uh, you know, we recognize our issues right now and in. And Vermont's education, um, for funding the issue. Um, and, and there was issues of sort of inequity and quality of quality across the state. Um, the one aspect of it that I think the, the main pushback that this alliance would. The piece that this would push back on is that idea of um, reducing down to five district boards. Um, because that eliminates or are greatly reduces the ability of communities themselves. To have a voice in what's, what happens and what changes. Um, how, extra years in their, in their, you know, inner communities, whether schools will continue on. And again, it's um, you know, there's recognition that some schools may have closed, several things have to change. Administration has to consolidate. Um, there's lots, there's lots of different things that can be done to. To improve the situation, but um. Like I said, my, my, my sense is that the, the main piece that the alliance would be. Sort of trying to protect is the idea of how they, you know, maybe not as many. Districts as there are right now, but certainly uh, governance more closely aligned. With the governance system right now. So instead of, um, so invitation to, to join. I think we can vote if we want to join. I don't think there's, there's not much of a downside. Um, you know, we're just sort of aligning ourselves in other um, districts that are relatively rural across the state. Um, if, if we feel like we want to protect the voice, you know, that. We tend to have, we have before. Um, I did bring this for just, I can't read it now, but it's just a iPhone. The letter from the White River Valley, um, S U's to legislators, but sort of outlines. Some of their positions and some of their concerns about the governor's proposal and it is, um, as it is right now. So, for your reading down the line, but I don't know if we can do a vote today, uh, about whether, you know. We would want to join. Obviously, time is tight. All it does is that, so I should say invitations have gone out. To all school boards and select. So I know I saw on the agenda for the first quarter, we're getting on the state that they are, moving up this.
Yeah, um, I suppose, um, it, it's kind of a, it seems like a, I wouldn't know the word is ceremony. But I guess if you wanted to make a motions, we can certainly see if you get a second and debate it.
Yeah, I would move for our, um, for our board to not use for, for this report to join the law school.
Is there a second?
This is Anna, I'll second.
Um, discussion. I'm just going to point out, are there any other organizations or competing voices that like this? I mean, I guess I took the first one here, this, but.
There are other people organizing in different forms to. Advocate around what legislation actually, you know.
I guess I just want to ask, is, is just, just one choice of several, I mean, that.
It's one we've gone by board, it's got invitations to join.
And we may have a representative on it with that.
Point person, it could be the, you know, chair or if she didn't want to. White person, um, the chair probably makes sense.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I want to throw my weight behind this. I don't know if I ended up getting the second or not, but um. Is this, this board, um, for years, I mean, since just prior to Act forty-six, has continued to. Uh, honor our small, specifically our elementary schools, um, and protect them um, from cuts and find ways to keep them. Um, vibrant and active. Um, when I think, and we've had, we've discussions at finance committee about this, when I think about. Um, you know, where uh, changes from Montpelier may go. Um, we often talk about, you know, the smaller schools, the, the rural elementary schools getting, getting shut down and. And what a, what a dramatic effect that has on the youngest and most vulnerable of the, of the students we have. Um, and so I think this is a really good opportunity for us to join behind something that already has a bunch of school boards and select boards behind it. Um, there's already momentum, um, you know, moving this forward. And I think that the more uh, community grassroots organizing we can do in this way, I think is going to be the best. Um, the best outcome is what we'll get from it, um, as we move down the road in, in figuring out what the new school structure is going to look like for Vermont. Thanks.
Tradition as board chair, and you don't uh, participate in these discussions, but I'm just sitting in preparing. Um, I think there's a lot that needs to be kind of seen how things will play out. Um, my concern on uh, joining. Um, at this kind of early point in the game would be, um, I guess there's other, there's like points of view and lots of. Um, lots of ways that this could break and I don't know that um, we lose anything by. Waiting until the new board is formed next month. But um, I guess that's, those are my thoughts. All right, um, with that, uh, all in favor of uh, joining the um. W R, hold on, seven persons?
No, the rural school.
Rules already, Corinne, can you help me out? The, the one, the rules to the alliance, thank you.
Well, I guess I want to bring up the, what is there, what's the, the concern of any of, why not wait? Yeah, for my vote as a, as a party member is joining the alliance. Uh, no, I'm little to nothing. I mean, I, I understand the intent about it, right? But there's a lot of details kind of play out still. I think the intent is right. Um, I, I'll vote to abstain because, just because I don't feel like. You know, there's more to be gained, uh, gathered, gained. Um, and it doesn't sound like it's imminent, like either you're in now or you're, are enemies. So to speak. Um, I, I guess I'm asking the question, are there concerns about not joining now and waiting? Until you have a handful of board members, you know, participating in the debate?
I'll speak to that, I guess. Um. I, I think the only thing is that things are happening right now and they're happening. And there was a lot of pressure on legislators to do something. Everybody wants to do something. But to, and, and I think that there's particular pressure to. Go with the, go with the plan, um, as, as laid out. Um, I think that. One thing, something like this does, if it has strength of membership, is just show that there are. Um, communities across the state that really do care about that voice, you know. After this legislative session is over and one, you know, um, and I think that if we show that now. Legislate in the advocacy and in the work that's being done right now and in the sort of bedding of different. You know, ways to go. The legislators may see, okay, look, you know, communities really do, though they may understand that. Um, you know, some sort of consolidation has to happen. You know, there is a, there is a, a risk of advocating sort of all power to, you know. The, the governor and the A O E and, and, and five very political, you know, forces. Um, who will then, you know, make a lot of decisions that have a lot of impact. So, I mean, I think men, joining in now is important. I, in my view, to show sort of that unity. If, if enough, you know, it sort of is, the point of sort of gathering the lines now is that. There is this sort of big voice, you know, throughout the state that's unifying and saying, we, we don't want to do that. You know, you don't want to like, just sort of trust that you're, you know. Um, that, you know, sort of more top-down decision-making. So, so I, I think that, you know, a few weeks can, can maybe.
Uh, Ryan and then Heather?
Is this something that we, if we decide to join, we can also take people someday to exit. As a group, if we decided when everything comes out and it doesn't seem what, what we're into?
Yeah, I don't see why not. Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's really pretty, um. Full in, in terms of, um, you know. You're in, you've got an invitation to join, we're listed as a member, you know, if we said that we don't want to be a member anymore. Because what you're advocating is not, we don't necessarily believe that, then we could even call a special meeting or, you know, people feel like. It was going down the wrong road.
Cool.
Um, that we can do that.
Heather?
Thank you. Uh, first I want to say I'm sorry I couldn't be in, uh, present tonight. I'm sure the cupcakes are lovely. Sorry, I missed them. Uh, I'd like to throw my voice behind Corinne. I want to share with the board that they've named a, a, a series of committees. I, I believe it's eleven committees that are called sprint committees, sprint, meaning fast. So they have a sprint committee to define policy on governance. They have one to define policy on C T E. One for after-school, one for preschool. They have, it's, and it's moving fast. So I want to throw my voice behind her and advocate that, um, right now. There's still some listening happening. The opportunity for counter proposals, right? That might be more reasonable are open. And so I do think a few weeks might matter. Thank you.
Other discussion? I think we'll probably need to do this one by uh, roll call, uh, given where we are. So let's, um. I guess let's go ahead and do the hard part first. We'll go with folks on line. And I'll just go on the top of the screen. Uh, so this would be, uh, give me a, getting there or abstaining. To join the rural school community alliance, Bob Green.
I'm in favor. Thank you, Heather, for speaking up to the matter.
He's yay. Okay, uh, let's see, Anna?
Yes, in favor.
Katie?
Yay.
Heather?
Yay.
Rain, just rain in on this.
I don't think I voted on this.
Okay, Ray, we'll skip you. Lydian?
Yay.
It's a yay?
Yep.
Okay, Ernie?
Yay.
Okay, who else do we have? Any other board members online? Um.
No.
Doesn't flag it, right?
Yay.
John, I would have said, um, Corinne, John, Adam, Steve, okay?
Yay.
Um, yeah, all abstain. Everything looks like the ice has, they motioned.
Okay, um, so Carrie, uh.
She's off again, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, right, item on the time, um, scheduled appointments is board terms concluded, uh, to be a little bit better. But as you can see in the packet, um, as town meeting day approaches, bringing with it the annual meeting of, but the district. Saying goodbye to four board members, uh, myself, Adam, and our student reps, Owen and Aiden. Uh, Adam joined the board in March of twenty eighteen, the exception of the newly merged district, bringing Reading. And I joined in March of twenty nineteen, when the district had just one year under the, under its belt and owned it, Aiden had been. Here since the fall of twenty twenty-one, first as visitors, delivering student reports, then as not moving board members for the season, probably. Student one put on decision made. So, um, off we go.
Well, I think you guys.
Yeah, can we have a little discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Both of you and, and obviously Ben in particular, a lot of your, all the work that you have done on the fact. Um, the new bill, um, but yeah, well, the voices have been super important.
I wanted to say, Ben, thank you for the spreadsheets and for explaining them and for coming out to your accounts and everything. And really, it's been great and proud. And for explaining them and for coming out to your accounts and everything and really been great and proud. Worked on the policy committee and you definitely could just take something and just still with them. That's, I appreciate it.
So I've known Adam since he was, I'm going to jump in on him, sir. So many might know that, not know that Adam was actually employed at the district for a period of time. Amazing school psychologist and for reasons beyond both of our control, but didn't continue. It was such a pleasure to see you come to board and again, bring your wisdom. And, you know, I was reminding of your sense of humor because I often don't get to sit next to you except for the last board meeting. And sitting next to Adam in a board meeting is so much more fun. Because what is mumbled under his breath is just, just enlightening. Never, 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 never. But I do, I agree, just your ability to bring us to the real important points. And, and offer a really insightful and always students first. You're a school psychologist and you really think deeply about what's right for kids and I, I truly appreciate that. So you will be missed. And then it is, we've had our Tuesday morning coffees. Watching Ben clean his office is so much fun. Carrie can witness to it. But again, your, your power and voice to the new build and commitment to that project was so inspiring. Those late nights and some very. Accepting and approving communities who were really brought us through those really, some challenging conversations, but always respectful and focused. And I really appreciated your role of finance. I think we've got a well-oiled machine that really allows people to be very involved in those conversations. And you can lay it out, some really tough conversations in ways that are hard to have, but we did it. And I really appreciate all your effort in doing so. All right, Anna.
Yeah, I wanted to apologize to, to both of y'all and Owen and Aiden for not being there. I've, I've got two respiratory illnesses stacked on top of one another, so I thought I would keep that to myself this evening. Adam, I really appreciate everything that you've done for Reading. First and foremost, making my entry into the school board very gentle. I've always appreciated your ability to step back and collect your thoughts and then deliver your messages so succinctly and so clearly. And I, I choose to do a closer job to that when I, when I share my thoughts as well. And then Ben, I, I told you how much I, I honored how much work you've done for us, both as finance, but also as a leader. And as a community member. So thank you both so much. And I am jealous and wish your recovery from school board goes quickly.
Thanks, Anna.
Can I add Brandon, who was homesick and zoned out, but he can't, doesn't have much of a voice. But he wanted to say that, Adam, you've been an incredible advocate for Reading Elementary School Community and you will be missed. And you do get coffee mugs, even though I told Benny couldn't have one because I wasn't happy.
Yep, yep, yep.
Our coffee mug shelf is in a fire code state, right? It's 9:00 o'clock, you have to break one, get a new one. Probably all bust one.
I would just want to say two words, it's more than two, but. Now, underwrite, it's been for six years of some very carried, frankly uncomfortable and emotional. District, school district, school board meetings. All you, you shared some very kind words about my approach to things, but it certainly didn't feel like that. Early on, as the emotions were quite high. But it's just, it feels really good to go out on a note, we have these civilized conversations. Now, because they weren't really civilized. And I, I think, you know, it's, I thought it's nice sitting next to you, Owen and Aiden. Because having a student represent, representation to the board, I feel like it's even further grounded us of like, this is, this is why we're here. And that we can have civil discourse that often our students sort of wants to remind us first and foremost, right? And I just hope, and I'm sure it will continue as our current climate is challenged in many ways. But I think you all have the right tools to make it happen.
I'll feedback on that, Adam. I remember we were going out into the different community sessions for the, the new build and the run-up. Got to Reading and showed up at the door and you welcomed me and you said, said, geez, there's a flyer on the door here. For a new middle school and high school building in Woodstock. If this had been up here five years ago, you wouldn't have needed a police escort. And that meeting turned into like a working group, everybody just brainstorming on how we can prove the presentations or the early sessions that we did. And it's just so collaborative and it's a testament to how far we've come as a, as a district, not as seven individual towns and its representatives fighting for crumbs. But as really working together to put the students first and to, you know, move this extraordinary school community forward. And I'm going to miss everybody. I wish you all the best of luck as you continue this extraordinary work that we do.
Thank you. So then we have our two student reps, who I've known one for very long since he moved here from Florida. And Owen, since he chose us as his high school. We've had four years of working together and I think the level of collaboration in terms of us meeting as kids and students. We took a trip to Ithaca and these two young men presented to a room full of administrators, superintendents from all over. And just gave us much to be proud of in terms of who our students are in Woodstock Union High School. They just bring, again, a level of civility and depth that has really added to the conversation of our. Board. So I want to thank them and they get a little bit more than you guys. They have something in their pocket.
I mean, I think that I have two children and they're in this district. And just observing it to be over the, I mean, I remember that after the first meeting and both came to. And then I learned that you were freshmen, like what? No, right? That I hope that our students are continuing kind of the trend that you've set, like what grade role modeling? If this is any kind of indication of where you're going with your lives and your career.
I'd like to add, I am going to Aiden a few times on advice. Because he understands the board and it's purposeful, how it all functions part of it, I did myself as a member, so. No, just to you. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Great committee updates. Let's see, we are providing updates of work committee and working groups. Finance met, we discussed the changes that Carrie talked about in her report. Don't know if any other important businesses covered in finance, but I guess I'll echo what I just said. It's been great chairing finance committee and we do have some interest from board members capable of carrying on the work in finance. So hopefully it's all turned into, we turn it over into good hands in the next formation board. Policy.
Yep, so we have our third reading of our student activities, clubs and policy. And just to review, this is in a, one of all this even a policy that we've been working on working here. And Corinne put a lot of effort into this, probably most of the baby. And so we come to this, we're having at this level right now. And just, just to tell you the essence of it, it's basically about the sponsorship of cultural purposes, mostly on sports. And it just puts some guidelines and guardrails on for, you know, how you, how you have a sponsorship, how you can continue it. Start it, I can change it, if numbers drop. And it is taking into consideration budgetary matters. And also there's a sort of a way of monitoring it that's presented to the board of the year in terms of. How participation, et cetera. So pretty detailed. We've had the opportunity to have the third reading. We have not actually received any feedback. At this point, I'm actually asking for, for next time to be adopted at the next meeting. That's what, that's what mine.
Do we need a motion?
I mean, that, then, yes, you can, someone can motion.
Okay, great. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Corinne. Adam, you have the second. All in favor, please say that. Any opposed? Okay, the ice now, we'll move on, pick that up in our next video. Is that it for policy? I like that's it. Yes, okay, great. Is Matt or anybody from buildings and grounds? Joe, anybody?
I, I could probably speak to that.
Okay, hey Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, our last meeting was pretty interesting. We covered a few things. We reviewed the last few rooms that have no heat because of the control. As a result of the project we did with J C I. So we're still dealing with that. There's no heat. And actually, we're going to mediation with J C I over the failed, failed performance on their part of the contract. So that was it. We've got a couple of other issues we've got to be dealing with. One is dust cleaning. And PCB media mitigation in the ductwork. So we're going to be cleaning the ducts and, and retesting for PCBs. Also, there's another round of lead testing that we're required to do, and that's not going to be funded. That's an unfunded mandate from the state. So we're all looking forward to that. Probably the biggest disappointment was the gym roof options. We've had an engineer looking at the, at the causes of the, of the, the creaking and groaning and cracks in the masonry. And they came up with a plan to bring the roof of the gym up to current standards as if it was a new school. What would be required? We put it out to bid and got one bidder for $600,000. So that's a non-starter. So what we elected to do instead was to investigate monitoring and putting sensors and, and measuring strain. And, and find out. If snow loads or things like that are really something to be concerned about. Before we go spending all that money on just throwing a lot more steel up there. So that was a little disappointing, but. It's, it's pretty much our own, our, our only. Way to proceed at this point, but it's maybe a canary in the coal mine. When the discussion comes around to talking about a new school again, that this stuff's going to keep happening. And, and we're not always going to be in control of, of how to take care of these things. So that was about it from building and grounds. All, all great news.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, do you want to respond to Aiden's question, or I don't know, Matt's joined us, good evening, Matt. Regarding temperature variation in classrooms, is that the result of the Johnson control issues that you alluded to?
Well, our understanding from Joe was that we've got it under control for the most part. There are a few classrooms at Wes that the valves, that we're not part of the new contract. They're, they're existing valves, old valves. That are just not working and we've been dealing with the situation by manually opening and closing those valves when we need more heat, less heat, et cetera. Those are going to be replaced this summer. Really, the only place that's really got a problem of, of heating is the sped classrooms. I think it's 26, my memory serves me right, from years ago. That's got no heat at all. And, and that again, I don't think is directly related to the, the contract with J C I. But a problem with a unit heater in that, in that room. But I think for the most part, the classrooms were, were getting control of the entire system. Where the software is working for the most part. I think the few remaining issues have to do with, with these valves.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Sounds to me like the student's perception of the situation is different from what Joe's.
Well, telling Bob was talking about being able to get heat to classrooms, not necessarily how hot or how cold. So one question was going to be, you, you, since you guys are from the school, way more than the rest of us. What classrooms do you like, you've noticed it in? Is there a certain wing you notice in more than others?
I think it's definitely like a lot along the Green Mile, it's like the big hallway right there. Very prominent, I mean, we have eight pubes together, which is bright, like in that aisle. And it's like, we're sitting right next to the queue, so we get a full blast like right in the back of our heads, loud noise. Heard it in the chemistry classroom, and closer towards those bathrooms for the gymnasts. I think the biggest parts that I hear is in that area. It's definitely like, the, the big thing with students on this and teachers alike is the disruption, disruption that it causes. Not only the sporadic on and off, but the noises in the temperature change that's created is very much like. One second will be hotter, then the next will be cold, which is like, not quite sure how that works out. But that'll also be like really loud, so mid lesson, it's like a big blast of heat. And then we weren't able to control it. And then a few months, like a month or so ago, the knob were taken out. And so we just wanted some more insight to see if we can kind of figure out how. Like we can, we can kind of like the heating system can work down the strip while also making sure classrooms are smoothly.
Jim, you have the sprinkle in here?
Yeah, the knobs are taken out and are locked up. The reason we can't use the sped room right now is because teachers shut the heat off in there. And the unit froze and it's 12 weeks to get a new $15,000 unit put in there. And this is happening regularly, the teacher's room gets hotter, it's too noisy, they shut it off. And this happens. And so. We have electronic control system and what they need to do is contact Joe or students, and they can from their laptop change the temperature in the room.
Well, it's like on the D V C system where it's control on the computer.
It, it is, and we've been struggling with it.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been struggling with it, but we're getting better and better as the system is starting, you know, they're fixing all the problems with it. So we're getting there as far as the noise. Although some of the units, especially in the middle school, are three or four-year-old unit events. We're looking at 15-year-old units with heater fans. And so the, the heat comes on, the fans kick on, it blows out a lot of hot air. Room comes up to town, they shut down, when it's cold and you're sitting by the heater, it's 10 degrees warmer than it is on the other side of the room. And that's the beauty of unit vent heat.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone should believe that even with all the money we've spent so far trying to get a hold of, get a control. A system working on it is going to produce a system that's up to modern heating, ventilating and air conditioning standards. It's not going to be that way. This is, this is Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid on a 40-year-old system. So until or unless we got a new school. I mean, there are going to be compromises we're going to have to make. That includes the students.
I would agree with what Bob is saying.
Could be a way for, I don't know if it is, you know, a, a small set of classes. Whereas particularly an issue where the teacher, you know, could work with Joe or whatever to, to work on the schedule, look like turning on and off. So that it's.
Teachers cannot have that control. We do have a, they control the timing. We set up for each function.
Hey, this is devolved into a working group of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, so I'm going to have a response, that's all right. Anything else from Buildings and Grounds?
Nope, that's it. Thank you, Ben.
Great. Let's go into negotiations, time or attention, any other things?
No, we, we met with support staff, negotiations continue with our, with last week, which came again next week. support staff, negotiations continue with our this last week, which came again next week.
Okay, great, we did uh feature the new uh teacher's contract in the annual report of the uh board chair. So, you know, great work this year. And any working groups, uh group dates? Does it sound like, okay, um is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth special meeting and the January sixth meeting of those together? So John, Brian, the second, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those few sets of minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the eyes have it, those minutes are approved. Um public comments for a second bite at this apple? No bites the first time around.
Ben, uh Ben Tom airs here. Um I just want to inject, I I know it's unusual for the media to speak up during public comment, but um I just want to inject, having covered the uh school board and school issues for the last four years for the standard, I just want to thank you and Adam for uh the very cordial and collaborative interactions we've had with one another, particularly you, Ben, around uh helping me to walk through the weeds of Excel spreadsheets uh over the last couple of years. And to uh and to Owen and Aiden, you guys have been rock stars in terms of representing uh the students in the school system. And uh oh, and I would say in particular, the uh the op ed you piece you wrote for the standard this past week on the cell phone issue was uh was spot on, and that's your crowning glory as you as you leave the board, so thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Other public comment? See none? You're going to get out with our skins, all right?
Noon, we have three executive session.
Uh okay, um is there a motion to go into our first executive session for a student?
Can we, we're going to do personnel first and then student.
Sorry, personnel.
I have, I have one other question, will there be any actions taken coming out of these executive sessions?
I don't think so, Tom, but uh I'll see what the future holds. Uh are you asking if you should stick around?
More or less, yeah, I I, you know, I work it out with Raina that I stopped recording, um so.
Yeah, yeah, I I I doubt it, uh I would say that, I mean, I can't make any promises, but.
That sounds good. Well, you all have a good night, Ben.
You too, Tom.
Thank you.
We should do our second session and discuss personnel. Is there a second, John's on second, all in favor, please, Ben?
Aaron, can you stay available? I'll text you when you can return for the second executive session, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Paulie, good to see you. Okay, we're back in regular session. Is there a motion to accept the separation agreement negotiated by the administration? Um, they got them, is there a second? Thank you, Corinne. All in favor of accepting the negotiated agreement, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, hey, okay, so I think after three nays, I want to do this by a roll call then. Give me a yay or nay to accept the negotiated uh separation agreement, Bob Crane.
Yay.
Uh Anna? Anna, you're a nay?
Nay.
Or abstain?
Nay.
Okay.
Yay.
Uh Heather?
Aye.
Lydia?
Yeah.
Ernie?
Hi.
Nice, Matt. Matt, stop, you there?
Aye.
Oh, Ray, you're in on this one?
Aye.
Nice one, um okay, Ryan?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Corinne? Is that a yay? John?
Yeah.
Okay, Adam's a yay. Uh Bob?
Aye.
And Karen, Carrie's a yay, and she's signing off.
Okay, the uh yays, I guess you know, all joined just for fun, uh fourteen to three, the eyes have it, motion carries. We have it, um now there are two student matters.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to go into executive session? That's two student matters.
Student matters. Yes.
Do that. Second from Josh, yeah, okay, great, uh all in favor, say aye. We are out of executive session with no action take. Um it's now time for reflection. Do we have any reflection this evening?
I would like to reflect, I will be the first to motion to adjourn on my intemission second.
I'll say it, all in favor? All right, anybody? Any opposed? The eyes have it, we are adjourned, uh in an hour, in no, two, uh hour and fifty five minutes, look at that.
All right, thank you all. Everyone but Josh, please take a cupcake. Good night to all.